No approval of anything going on tonight, either in the executive session or after the executive session?
Thank you. I think it's also important to note that we have not had an executive session where we have met with any operators at all. So, I want to make that very clear because I know there was some information going out that we were meeting with operators and we have not. We have staff that goes and our attorneys that work on this stuff and we merely get updated as to what those negotiations are and questions of where, what we are doing, what we're not doing by the council, but there's no outside parties involved. Let me make that very clear. With that said, I'm open for a motion in a second to enter into an executive session, including-
Mayor, I'd like to make public comments since this is a motion.
Mayor Ford, this is, there's not an opportunity for a public comment at this time?
I just wanted to go to you because you are the parliamentarian and I wanted to make sure that that was adequate. So, there is no public comment at this time and because of, for executive sessions, we don't have that allotment, according to our attorney. So, thank you. I'm still open for a motion pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Pahrinze, for the purpose of determining negotiating positions, developing negotiation strategy, and instructing negotiators and receiving legal advice relating to the negotiation of regional operator agreement with Extraction LLC and the city's responses to state oil and gas permit applications. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
I, before, when you were asking our attorney to go over what this stated, I was going to ask a question.
All right. Well, I'll come back to you because we've got a motion on the floor. Once I have a second or no second, then I can, the motion can either fall off or be seconded, then I can have some discussion.
Okay.
But I can't take discussion in between.
All right.
Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go into that executive session. Before I call for a vote, I want to go to discussion. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. You know, since we don't have a full body here on board for this subject, my ask would been to postpone this until we have a full body of, because just the nature of the discussion.
Mr. McBroom?
Just a brief clarification. This is really a status report to City Council on the status of negotiations with Extraction LLC. We anticipate there's still some ways to go in that process and as Mr. Sheasley indicated, even if we were at the end of the negotiation process, there would still be a public comment period so the public might have a chance to review the regional operator agreement. We actually don't anticipate being at that point in the process for several weeks yet.
Thank you. All right. I still go back to Mr. Douglas's question. Mr. Douglas, I have already done the motion in second to go into executive session.
Yeah.
Is there a alternate, a new motion that you'd like to make? We've acted on the motion. We are going into executive session.
There has not been a vote yet, so the pending motion is the motion to go into executive session.
Right.
So, another motion would have to relate specifically to that, so my recommendation would be to proceed on that motion and then if it is rejected, then council could consider another motion.
Okay. So, I have a motion in a second to go into executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion is carried. We are going into executive session. Did you have an alternate motion you'd like to make at this time?
Mayor Ford?
Yes?
At this time, the executive session would be the action that council would be taking though, so you'd have to wait to come back.
So, I can't, I can't-
At this point, I believe-
-afford him the opportunity to do anything different.
I think it would be inappropriate at this time, yes.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know. Trying to give Mr. Douglas the benefit of the doubt there. I'd like to ask the audience to please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If the staff would please pass the microphone around, allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Guillermo Serna?
Amy Urick.
Alfredo Isguera with Little Giants Learning Center.
Jody Hardy, Community Relations.
Austin Rollison.
Kurt Steppen with Kids First Healthcare.
Monica Ruiz.
Deborah Ecclestone.
Shay Devlin.
Charles Wolfersberger with North Range Village Metropolitan District.
John Pointon, Adams 14 Schools.
Dale Mingleton, Adams 14 Education Foundation.
Dana Wood, Fish of Commerce City.
Loretta Garcia, Fish of Commerce City.
Pamela Haynes.
Peggy Wood.
Daniela Villarreal, Community Relations.
Jennifer Prather, Quality Community Foundation.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Armando Ardeola, Finance.
Jesse Ramidis, Inspire.
Gabriel Hernandez.
Spencer Crouch, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Blaine Singlestead, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Brock Chapman, SHUT Communities for Nexus North.
Susan Noble.
Stephanie Knight, The Senior Hub.
All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. We did get out of our, thank you. We did get out of our executive session a lot sooner than was expected and so we do have a little bit of time to move some things around on the agenda to allow the rest of the folks that have plans to come here to have a chance to have that half hour because of some of the timing on our agenda. I don't want to start with citizen communication because there may be more folks that show up between now and seven. And we can't do the consent agenda until after seven, correct? So, I would ask for a recommendation or a motion to amend the agenda to go ahead and put the oil and gas update to be first on the agenda, which could take place now. Is there a motion to do such? Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to move the oil and gas monthly update to now on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to amend the agenda to allow for the oil and gas update to occur at the beginning of the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion's carried. I'll turn it over to Brian to kick off the oil and gas update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Kramer is here to provide the update. I do have a quick regulatory update on behalf of the city after Mr. Kramer's update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is that time again for the update on the ongoing permitting activity for oil and gas in Commerce City. And this particular slide has remained unchanged throughout, but it in short summarizes that today the city has received no applications for city oil and gas permits. The Form 2As that are a COGCC, Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, process related to these have been placed on hold while the, for both Extraction and Great Western, have complied with this, but we have a third operator who has not complied with this in conformance with the COGCC process. There has been activity since last month's update regarding spacing applications. Council will notice the yellow highlights below showing the new spacing applications that are pending. Those are replacing, in essence, these eight spacing applications that were withdrawn. And I will show you a map of the new spacing units in just a moment. The Form 2s and Form 2As have remained unchanged and no new updates have been received since our last monthly update. And the note at the bottom there is still the same from previous months as well regarding the letter to the COGCC requesting a second round of comments. This is the new map I was referencing earlier. The, these are new colors simply indicating a difference between the previous approved spacing applications in blue- in blue and the new green pending applications that were submitted in the last month. We still have the overlapped... Two sections over by the Jacobson-Harlow pad that indicate there are multiple spacing applications on that, and I do not believe that issue has been resolved yet through the COGCC. The green dots are still showing the submitted Form 2s or the well pads that have been submitted to the state. Again, this does not reflect any oil and gas permits that have been submitted to the city. As far as overall work that has been occurring over the last month, staff has continued to meet with Extraction Oil and Gas regarding Regional Operating Agreement and Best Management Practices, those best BMPs that were contained in the community meeting that was held in December. Staff is continuing to monitor the legislation that is occurring at Capitol Hill and evaluating its potential impacts to Commerce City. Staff is also holding multiple meetings with the Fire and Emergency Response regarding how that... How those efforts can be incorporated into the Best Management Practices. And as a follow-up to that, I know there's been some feedback to staff at the community meeting as well as comments here in citizen communication about fire, emergency response, and potential evacuation plans. So in response to that, as part of the speaker series, could not make it tonight, but Randall Wiggum will speak at the April 1st City Council Meeting as a part of that speaker series. So again, we have been working closely, not only with South Adams Fire, but also Brighton Fire since part of their district covers Commerce City as well. So we're actually hoping to get Brighton Fire here as well on the 1st. So... But at the least, we will have South Adams County Fire and Sanitation, or Fire Protection District here. And then we're obviously still making progress on the impact fee. The modeling on that is still occurring, and we hope to be able to take that out to the public for public and stakeholder comment shortly. So with that, that's the update I have, and I know Mr. McGroom has additional information as well.
Does anybody have any questions on the council for Chris Kramer at this time on his presentation? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. I see that we're doing the oil and gas speaker series again this year?
Yes.
Is this the same type of speaker series as last year?
Yes.
Are we also having the citizens group come and speak too, or is this...
We did have the one night, I think in September of last year, I believe September, I might have that month wrong. But where we... There was two speakers from the industry and the Northern Range Concerned Citizens. At this point, we do not have another one of those joint scheduled meetings at this point. But certainly, staff is available to take any input or council direction that you might have on that.
Okay, so if either group wanted to present, they could, if council desires, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's councils.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Seeing none, Brian?
Mayor and City Council, earlier today, I sent to you via email the latest version of Senate Bill 181. By now, you're aware it's moved out of the Senate and is now going through the House approval process. The city's oil and gas lobbyist, Jeff Wilson, has been paying very close attention to how Senate Bill 181 is moving through the process and anticipates it could be approved in the next two to three weeks. You all will probably recall that if it passes, it will give additional authority to local governments to regulate oil and gas activities. As a result, earlier today, I did direct staff to begin reviewing what possible amendments to the Land Development Code may be necessary to address the impact of Senate Bill 181. It'll take us some time to figure that out, and we are planning for a City Council check-in at the City Council Study Session on April 8th.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McGroom? Seeing none. Let's see, we didn't burn much time on that, Brian.
I do have a couple of suggestions of things that we might be able to handle before 7:00. I believe the applicant is here for the zoning and annexation cases listed under the public hearings at 8:25 PM. And also, we have an ordinance on first reading that doesn't have an applicant. I don't expect the public to be here to comment on that, but in both cases, both agenda items were noticed for the meeting tonight. So both of those would be reasonable agenda items to take up while we wait for folks to arrive after 7:00.
Thank you. I would put it to the council for a motion to amend the agenda to allow for Annexation AN 250 and Zoning Z-945 SHUT Properties to be taken up at this time.
And Mayor Ford, that would also include Resolution 2019-18.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Mr. Madera?
Yeah, I move to amend the agenda to move Resolution 2019-18. Ordinance AN 250-19 and is Z-945-17-19 to... For citizen communication.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Annexation AN 250, Zoning Z-945 SHUT Properties. The council will now conduct a consolidated public hearing on the annexation and zoning of the property at Southeast Corner of 88th Avenue and Buckley Road in Cases AN 250 and Z-945. I'm going to open the public hearing. Remind council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express an opinion or indicate how you will vote. Will the staff please come forward to make the presentation?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. Cases before you tonight are Annexation Case 250 and Zoning Case 945. The subject property is located at the Southeast Corner of East 88th Avenue and Buckley Road. The applicant is SHUT Communities, Inc., and they're requesting to annex and zone the property to PUD. The subject site is a quarter acre, or a quarter section approximately 160 acres. It's located near Second Creek, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, the Buffalo Highlands Development to the north, the Second Creek Farms Development to the north and east, and then the DIA Tech Center Development to the south. We've got Tower Road to the east, 88th Avenue to the north, and then Buckley Road to the west. The comprehensive plan shows this property for office and flex development with an employment center designation. Here's an aerial of the site. It's currently largely undeveloped, formerly used for agricultural purposes. The request tonight is for annexation of the subject property into Commerce City as well as the annexation zoning of the property from Adams County A3, which is an agricultural designation, to Nexus North at DIA PUD zoning. So for the annexation request, the property does have the 1/6 contiguity required for annexation. It's surrounded on almost all sides by the city boundaries. For the zoning request, the applicant has proposed the Nexus North at DIA PUD Zone document. It is based on the city's I-1 zoning designation and has a few changes to emulate the DIA Tech Center zoning to the south. These deviations include a couple land uses, bulk standards and design standards. Most notably, they're allowing for more intense industrial uses in a couple planning areas, and those uses include truck transportation services, truck sales, and warehousing and distribution uses. It's also important to note that residential uses are excluded throughout the entire development. So looking at the proposed site, here are the planning areas and conceptual road layouts. So this PA1 to the south of the property is where those more intense uses would be allowed. That's adjacent to similar land uses within the Nexus at DIA or DIA Tech Center, PUD to the south. Then, as we move north and further to the east, the intensity of the uses gets less as we move through the planning areas. So PA2 is here, PA3 is here, and then this Planning Area 4 is limited to open space uses and floodplain because it's within the Second Creek floodway. The dotted line shows you the conceptual future road layout proposed within the development. This illustrates the design standards that the applicant is looking to... The vision that they're looking to present is part of the separate document that they've created, governing design standards within this development. It's somewhat similar to the DIA Tech Center design standards to the south. Then, as far as connectivity is concerned, the applicant is proposing not to have any access on East 88th Avenue. That's not an improved truck route. Most of the access to the site will be through the DIA Tech Center to the south. So let's look at the map. So to get to this property, you'll either come up 83rd Avenue, which turns into 84th, and access the site through Extended Telluride Street, or you can also come up East 81st and then access through Extended Quintero Street. So there will not be access to the north. This alleviates a concern that city staff and Planning Commission had regarding truck traffic on 88th Avenue and increasing truck traffic on Tower Road. So as far as Planning Commission goes, they were supportive of the proposal. They believe the transition of uses within the planning areas is a good integration between the DIA Tech Center Development to the south and then the Buffalo Highlands Residential and Second Creek Farms Residential Developments to the north. And the Planning Commission also appreciated the limitations on the amount of truck traffic generated in this development. As far as the annexation zoning criteria goes, we're proposing to zone this property based on the criteria that finds the zoning most compatible of the city's comprehensive plan designation for the property. Staff has not received any public comment or request for additional information at this time. The Development Review Team recommends that council approve this annexation, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing and took testimony and voted 5 to 0 on February 5th to forward the annexation zoning request to City Council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the following facts. City staff is here to answer any questions. It's important to note that later this evening, the ECA-GID Board will consider inclusion of this property as part of their upcoming hearing, but the applicant is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff from the council at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Sorry. Yes. Thank you for the presentation. I was just kind of curious on the northern access to 88th, being that Buckley Road is closed to truck traffic.
Correct.
And the intersection has been widened, and we do have a free-flowing of cars moving in and out. So I would think they would use that even maybe at an emergency access.
So there will be emergency access via 88th Avenue, but there will not be any regular traffic access. That would require extensive improvements to the crossing of Second Creek.
I didn't see that in the note, so thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or comments from the council at this time for staff? Seeing none, the applicant is here and present. Would you like to come forward and add any additional information that our staff did not provide in the update? State your name and address again for the record, please.
My name is Brock Chapman. I'm with SHUT Communities, 2 North Cascade Avenue, Suite 1280, Colorado Springs, 80903. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our Nexus North proposal tonight. If I could, if you would indulge me in one minor digression, I'd like to point out this is our company's 50th anniversary this year, and this Nexus North project is the first one we're doing under this new celebration we're kicking off. We also received a letter saying that we were selected for the 2018 Commerce City Economic Development Leadership Award, and so these were two wonderful ways to kick off our 50th celebration. So thank you to everybody in the room for that. Yeah, thank you. I think we have a breakfast this week, don't we? We do, so I get to have a breakfast as well. Some quick context, we are also the developers of the Nexus at DIA property to the south of Nexus North. And although this is Nexus North is certainly a new and separate proposed project from our Nexus at DIA community, we and the market view this proposed project as an extension or a second phase of the original Nexus at DIA project. The reason that's important is that a lot of planning was done to integrate the two as well as phase the intensity to the north to a lesser degree than is experiencing the south adjacent to our current industrial and technology park. Also of note, large... All the large sites in Nexus at DIA have either been sold or under contract. There's only a handful of small sites left along Tower Road. So it's been quite a successful project. It's been very well received. We thought the... We thought the application for Nexus North would be coming in plenty of time, but as it works out, we have run out of opportunities in the Nexus at DIA project already. I will start by noting that we are in full 100% agreement with the staff report and the recommendations for approval on both the annexation and the PUD zoning application. If not done automatically, I believe it is, but I respectfully request the staff report be officially entered into the public record. I'm going to skip a lot of the stuff that was already covered. I think the staff report's comprehensive, and since we're in full agreement with it, I'll just point out a few interesting items that are above and beyond the typical or the standard minimum criteria. There is a 50-foot buffer along the entire western edge of the proposed project. That is to provide an additional buffer to the wildlife refuge. It also provides additional buffering and trail connection opportunities for what was a former Buckley Road alignment. So that's part of a regional trail connection. Additionally, there's a trail proposed, a regional trail proposed by the town, quite frankly, along Second Creek. But we have a number of pedestrian connections that will connect the Second Creek major regional trail over to the former Buckley alignment and the trail to the west. So it'll have some nice pedestrian connectivity as well to make it more pedestrian-friendly. In terms of the land uses, as already described, the intensity of the land uses transitioned from the south portion of the Planning Area 1 of the property. And it's more like the Nexus at DIA, it has some more what we'll call intense land uses, but it's really warehouse distribution uses. And then as you transition to the north, those more intense land uses go away, and it's more flex and office-related uses in PA2 and Planning Area 3. So we've been cognizant of that and very... Not concerned, but very cognizant of the adjacent land uses. So that transition's something that we worked closely on with your staff. There's a very detailed land use table as well within the PUD Zone document that further details which uses are used by right, which ones are conditional uses, and which one require a permit. It's a very detailed land use table, but even though it's a number of land uses, each one of those land uses has a specific designation, and that was negotiated extensively with your staff to come to that final proposal. Of specific note, there are no residential uses whatsoever permitted in Nexus North. It's within the flight path area of DIA, and it's frankly not a good mix for the adjacent landfill use and all the proposed industrial flex office uses proposed for this community as well. In terms of transportation, as Ms. Oxmecker mentioned, 81st Avenue and 83rd are the primary access points. I would point out that 81st is already constructed with Nexus at DIA, and that traffic signal's already in. The 83rd, as it transitions to 84th, to the south end of the Nexus North property, that is actually under a public improvements agreement and a previous annexation agreement, that that's really all going to be built with Nexus at DIA, the next filing's coming up, filing 10 and 11. So all that's already going to be in. It will be included in this annexation agreement, just to be sure, but we see no circumstances from a timing perspective in which those won't be built prior to the Nexus North improvements. There was a detailed traffic study done, and it was very clear that sufficient capacity on roads and intersections, both within the proposed project and on Tower Road, exists, not only in the interim, but at full buildout and then long-term through 2040. And because we're taking most of the traffic further south within the community to access Tower Roads and not 88th Avenue, as was previously pointed out, that relieves additional truck traffic from queuing on Tower Road as well. We do, I won't go into the details, but if you read the full proposal, there are some additional enhanced building elevations and landscape screening required, both for buildings that front 88th Avenue and the Second Creek Corridor, and also enhance landscapes... that front 88th Avenue and the Second Creek Corridor, and also enhanced landscape screening is required for Planning Areas 2 and 3 for building elevations adjacent to the public right-of-way. So that's an additional level of architectural enhancements that's further described in the design guidelines that we're also work through with your DRT staff at a very detailed level. I'll just note that all utilities are available to serve this Nexus North project. If you're just dying to know the details, we can come back to that, and I can point out where they are, but in fact, most of the sewer and water is already in on 83rd and 84th Avenue, and then the rest will be served by the extension of Quintero and Telluride. In terms of justification for approval, I believe the City Council was justified in approving this annexation and zoning PUD, PUD application for the following reasons. They both meet or exceed the approval criteria and the goals set forth in the comp plan. The proposed PUD document is designed to be compatible with all the surrounding land uses. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the PUD Zone Document. Your DRT staff is recommending approval. The details of the PUD document and accompanying design guidelines have been thoughtfully established with your DRT staff to exemplify the intent behind the Employment Center designation. Additional visual enhancements have been provided by the design guidelines that exceed the minimum criteria. The PUD zoning document offers a more thoughtful, comprehensive, and integrated overall land use plan that would be available with the alternative standard straight-zone district of I-1 and I-2, which is industrial zoning. The Nexus North PUD document adheres to the future land use plan and supports the desired employment and commerce uses related to this area around the airport. And finally, and I appreciate your time, I, I just do want to take the opportunity, your, your DRT and planning staff all worked very hard on this to make this a great continuation of an already good project, but this one even has a higher level of detail. And so I want to take the opportunity to thank Jenny Axmaker for the PUD Zone Document and all the details on the design guidelines, Robert Cheesely on the annexation agreement, Michelle Claymore, Michelle, Michelle Mogulson on the land use designations from an economic development perspective, and Roger Tinklinberg for, well, herding cats, quite frankly, but ensuring that the project is well-aligned with Commerce City's overall vision. I respectfully request your vote to approve our applications tonight, and with that, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Don't leave yet. I want to go to the council. Any questions for the applicant from the City Council at this time? Mr. Douglas?
No, but I can make a comment. I appreciate you wanting to annex into the city. I think this is, what you have planned is gonna serve our city well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I want to ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to testify tonight on the case that's before the City Council. If you do, just raise your hand. Alright? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Susan Noble, 10642 Ole Street. I just want to point out that you are, again, considering development that will have oil and gas drilling if any of these projects go through. I don't think that any of these decisions can be made in a vacuum, and that residents and potential residents or people who are going to be working or living in that area ought to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to testify on the case before us this evening? Seeing none? I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion from the council on Resolution 2019-18. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve Resolution 2019-18.
Thank you. Councilman Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Resolution 2019-18, Resolution Making Findings Affect by the City Council of the City of Commerce City and its Conclusion Relative to Eligibility of Annexation to the City of Commerce City of the Property with PIN Number 172300000106, generally located at the southeast corner of East 88th Avenue and Buckley Road, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-250-19.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. I'm open for a motion on the ordinance AN-250-19. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve ordinance AN-250-19.
On first reading?
Sorry, on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance AN-250-19, An Ordinance Approving and Accomplishing the Annexation of Contiguous Unincorporated Territory Described in Exhibit A Attached Here 2 and Made Apart Hereof, Generally Located at the Southeast Corner of Buckley Road and East 88th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, motion's carried. Seven ayes, two absent on first reading. Now, I'm open for a motion on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z-945-17-19. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on KZ-945-17-19.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion on ordinance Z-945-17-19 on first reading. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve ordinance Z-945-17-19 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance Z-945-17-19, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance and Zoning Map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for Rezoning to PUD Zone District and Approving a PUD Zone Document for the property described in Exhibit A Attached Here 2 and Made Apart Hereof, Generally Located on the Southeast Corner of Buckley Road and East 88th Avenue, from Adco, Unincorporated Adams County, to PUD Plan Unit Development.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote. For the record, motion's carried. Seven aye, two absent. Alright, that takes us back to our agenda before it had been amended, and we're gonna get into recognitions. So tonight, we have the Quality Community Foundation Grant Awards. I'd like to invite the members of the Quality Community Foundation Board to recognize their Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Let us know who all your members are, and a little short snippet about the QCF before you get into recognizing your grant recipients.
Sure. My name's Jennifer Prather. I currently have the pleasure of serving as the President of the Board of the Quality Community Foundation. My name's Billy Gurr, current Vice President. One of our newer members, Jeff Ray, and one of our exiting members, Brendan Benz. We want to thank him for his service to the Board, and he's gonna be keeping the city in mind with some other service on their boards.
Great. You want to tell everybody what you do for us?
Sure. Quality Community Foundation enjoys a allocation from the City Council to make grants to nonprofits that promote the quality of life in Commerce City. I'd like to thank you for that allocation. In addition, we work to promote post-secondary education opportunities for students from Commerce City, and we have activities that do some fundraising to allow us to do all of those activities.
Great, and I think it's important for the audience to know, many years ago, the City Council used to identify those grant recipients on our own, and it was better to move that at arm's reach away from the council, and now we have the Quality Community Foundation that vets all of the nonprofits that apply for grants and determines what those awards will be and to whom. So we thank you for the service that you provide to the city to make sure that these nonprofits have the opportunity to generate some grant opportunities to continue to operate, to provide services for our residents. So thank you very much. And I'll let you get into your presentation.
Awesome. Before, one more thank you to the council that I wanted to get in is that your efforts to fill all the seats on our board, it's very much appreciated, and it has made a great impact in our work and our ability to think more creatively and possibly stretch ourselves and undertake some really new activities and, and think about our board a little differently now that most of our seats are filled. So thank you for that.
Do you still have some vacancies?
I believe with Brendan transitioning off, and I believe there's one more after that.
Really? This is a great time for you to put a plug in. You're on Channel 8.
Absolutely.
Maybe you can get some takers.
The application is available on the city website. We'd love to have, put the council to work with some more interviews.
That'd be great. Thank you.
If, with council's approval, what we'd like to propose is, as we did last year, I will read the names of the grantees, and then we will all come forward with representatives of those organizations in our audience and take a photo, and then the board members and staff, city staff who work with our board, will go out to the lobby to hand out the awards and also collect the grant agreements, which are a new part of our process.
Oh, sounds great.
Okay. So our first grantee is A Precious Child, next Adams 14 Education Foundation, Adams County Emergency Food Bank, Adams County Youth Initiative, Adelante Community Development, Almost Home, Alternatives for Youth, CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties, Catholic Charities and Community Services of the Archdiocese of Denver, Commerce City Cultural Council, Commerce City Rotary Foundation, Community Uplift Partnership, Fish of Commerce City, Food Bank of the Rockies, Foster Source, Inspire.
You can all come on up and just line up up here. We're gonna come down there in a minute.
Oh, and I forgot Ed Hanson, one of our newer board members as well.
Right.
Joyful Journeys Community Enrichment, Junior Achievement of the Rocky Mountains, Kids First Healthcare, Let Your Light Shine, Little Giants Learning Center, Project Angel Heart, Reaching Hope, Ralston House, Stout Street Foundation, The Feline Fix, and Senior And I had one that stuck together last year, so I hope I haven't missed anyone in the audience.
Now, if council would join me down front, we'll take a picture with all the grant And before we get into our next recognition, I want to make note that we have a county Thanks, Chaz, for being here, and, and Chaz's wife. I think it's great that they come down, and my guess is you're here to support Foster Source.
I am.
Perfect.
I was here to support all.
Well, sure you were, but I know, I know that you have particular ties to Foster Source, so thanks for being here to support the recipients for our grants.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next is the Civic Academy Graduation. I'd like to invite the staff forward to present the academy graduates with their certificates.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jody Hardy, Community Relations Manager for Commerce City, and I'm here to present the graduates for the inaugural class of the Civic Academy. This past January, the city kicked off a pilot program for this seven-week Civic Academy to serve as a resource for residents who are interested in deepening their knowledge of the city and its operations. Participants learn about a wide range of topics ranging from residential services to growth and development to public safety and school districts. So in a moment, I will present the 14 graduates. When I call your name, please come forward to collect your certificate and remain standing on the stage, and then we'll invite city council down for a group photo. So I'm pleased to recognize, recognize the 14 inaugural City Academy, City Academy graduating class of 2019. Clark Bergren and Brenda Bergren. Deborah Bullock is also a graduate. I don't see her in the audience tonight. Susan Carbajal.
I don't see Susan either.
The one question I have for all of the graduates, I guess, before we come down there to take pictures is, it's a new program. How did you guys all receive it? Did you benefit from it? And would you recommend others participate in it? Well, I, I think it's important, and it's really important from our perspective, so that you know what we can and can't do, and how we have to do it, and, and so hopefully you all can share some of what you learned with your neighbors and other residents to, to help inform people about how our government operates at this level. So thank you all. The one question I have for all of the graduates, I guess before we come down there to take pictures is, it's a new program. How did you guys all receive it? Did you benefit from it? And would you recommend others participate in?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it's important and it's really important from our perspective so that you know what we can and can't do and how we have to do it. And, and so hopefully you all can share some of what you learned with your neighbors and other residents to, to help inform people about how our government operates at this level. So, thank you all for participating. And if the council will join me down front, please. Oh, Mr. Madera.
You know, I just got one question. Who's giving the, the class speech?
Ha ha.
Okay. There we go. Yep. Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. A few more, please.
Finance Department staff forward. All right, you guys are just always getting awards, which is good. It's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Now, you can turn it on, see if you can talk back.
Right.
I'm making sure. Government Financial Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the City of Commerce City, Colorado for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending in December 31st, 2017, is the first one. Second one is, from the Government Finance Officers Association, Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting, presented to the City of Commerce City, Colorado for its Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending in 2017. And it's important to us, to the city council, to make sure that we have a finance department that goes above and beyond and achieves, achieves the awards that you guys have been achieving because it helps to let everyone know that we're, we're holding you to a higher standard. And can you tell me how many years in a row you have generated these awards?
So, the first award that you mentioned, the Excellence in Financial Reporting, it's our 31st year of receiving that award. And the award for the Popular Annual Financial Report, it's our second year receiving that award.
That's awesome. Keep up the good work. I'm trying to get Guardiola to stay there a little bit longer, just to kind of overshadow Jose a little bit. But we truly appreciate all of the employees, but tonight, we want a little special appreciation for our financial department. And the two of you head that up. But we, we are supportive and proud of all of the employees in the financial department. So, thank you very much. Is there anything you want to say before we come down?
I just want to say we appreciate the recognition from you. Each year when we submit the applications for these awards, the panelists that review the applications always submit back comments to us. We take those comments very seriously and implement those in the next year going forward and make sure that we're reviewing those throughout the year. There's always something new we can do and can, ways that we can continue to use our accounting effectively and be transparent to the residents. So, even though we have received the award for 31 years, it is very important feedback that we get them so we can continue to do best practices in accounting. I certainly also want to recognize my staff. I also want to mention and recognize especially Armando. He is responsible for putting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report together and get that to me for my final review before our external auditors show up. It is a large document. Many hours go into that. So, since he has come to the city, he has certainly made the process and that document better. So, I want to acknowledge his work especially.
Absolutely. He's done a great job. You know, sitting here thinking about it, you try really hard to achieve the level to be able to get these type of awards. But after 31 years, now you need to be worried about not getting it.
Right.
Right? Because that's, that's where things go south is 31 years in a row, you don't want to be the group that doesn't get it.
We do not plan to let that happen.
That's right. We don't think you do either. So, with that said, if the council will please join me down front.
The other thing I just wanted to mention quickly is we do have some of the Popular Annual Financial Reports, which is the summarized version of the cap. I'm gonna leave them with Mr. McBroom. I believe some of you already have them and they certainly can be found on the city's website. But if you don't have one and want one, I'm gonna leave them and he can return any extras back to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
there any additional signups in the back? City clerk, is there any additional folks who have signed up? And since you brought me the first? No? Alrighty. So, we have four folks that have signed up to speak during citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you are here to speak on an ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait, or that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. City council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. And please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. And thank you. With that said, I do know that Brock Chapman had signed up and we can't have you on there. We're already through your case anyway. But that's one of those that have to wait till the appropriate time. So, now that brings us to three. We'll start with Susan Noble. Please come up, state your name and address for the record and welcome.
How do you do? Susan Noble, 10642 Oleath Street. Thank you very much for moving the oil and gas report from the end of the agenda to the beginning of agenda. That's very much appreciated. I would like to tell the community that the new extraction spacing units are 4,000 more acres than the previous spacing application. It's well over 17 square miles of North Commerce City. It takes in South Lawn, Kingsupers, the land between Kingsupers and Bison Ridge Recreation Center, and also North Range Village. 16 families in North Commerce City have protested the spacing application. It would have received a pro forma approval on March 11th and 12th. That did not occur. There is a process for protests of spacing applications and that process is underway currently. Last week, the oil and gas company that is the primary operator in this area was penalized $800 and $3,000 for violations at multiple locations in Weld and Larimer Counties. The violations involved required Bradenhead testing, which involves determining wellbore integrity. And that's a safety issue. So, the wellbore is what goes down seven miles and goes out two or three miles. And if we're worried about the aquifer and the water here and the groundwater here, then we ought to be paying attention to this. There are multiple wells on each of the sites that were tested, I mean that the COG CC noted, and none of them had received the required Bradenhead testing. So, how you are going to make this oil and gas operator to perform is another question when they aren't due it on the current wells that they have, let alone what's planned for this area. I'd also like to point out that the city and county of Denver also protested the same spacing application, yet this city declined to do so. I think it's important that the city take a stand for the people in North Commerce City. There's only council member Douglas, whose property is also being fracked. It doesn't occur for the rest of you. I think Jose Guardiola, you're in another part of North Commerce City and that operator is currently sort of MIA. I don't, we don't know what's happening with that operator. So, you are not in current danger. But there is the case for tens of thousands of other homes and other residents in North Commerce City. And we would like to at least once hear empathy from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Shay Devlin.
Good evening. My name is Shay Devlin. I'm at 14492 East 102nd Place. I'm here today just to make some comments regarding the, again, the apartment complex that was built at the southwest corner of 104th and Sable. When I purchased my home two, three, almost three years ago, we knew that that property, it was zoned for multifamily, which we didn't have a problem with. We knew that the eventual development of the north area has to happen. It's inevitable, must go. However, when we had a meeting with the developers and the city regarding the development of that apartment complex, all of the members of, that showed up from the Foxham Village and from North Range Village, the North Range Metropolitan District, we were informed at that meeting that Dominion, that the property was going to be paying into the property taxes. So, they were going to be paying for the south, the fire district, police district, the city, the county, the schools, and they would be helping because they are part of our north metro district, they are part of our district, that they would be taking on some of the burden of the infrastructure bonds that were in place that we are currently paying for all of at this point. We were expecting, we were told by the Dominion that they would be paying taxes. We were told by the city, the city representatives, that they would be paying their taxes. And now we're finding out that the whole entire complex is tax exempt. So, all of the other residents of, you have 518 homes, are now bearing the burden tax-wise for the infrastructure, for everything that we have to pay for. We are paying the burden for that department, that development, that apartment complex. So, we are accepting the burden for it to be, it was supposed to be, I believe, beneficial to the whole entire city to have affordable, affordable income-qualified housing in the northern area. And I am just, I don't understand how you can have people sit at a meeting and tell the citizens that live in the area that this development is going to help the city and it then ends up ending on my back with my taxes being as high as they are. And my taxes are paying for their kids to go to school, are paying for the, all of the, the things that, the city's not getting anything, the county's not getting anything. I have to give it to them. I don't find it fair. And I don't understand how all of a sudden they would go from not, from having to pay taxes to tax exempt without any kind of communication to anybody that it would affect directly. How does that decision get made? When did that decision get made? And why would you have people telling us directly that they were gonna pay their taxes and now they're not? So, now I have to pay for that property, that property having been developed, for the benefit of the city to have low-income or affordable income-qualified housing in the city limits.
Is Chris available? Or you want to take a stab at that, Robert?
I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with the facts that the, that Ms. Devlin presented. So, I would have to defer and see if staff could look into this. I'm gonna respond after that.
Chris, do you have any answer to some of these questions?
Perhaps while Mr. Kramer's coming forward, we can certainly provide some more information to Ms. Devlin about the nature of the company that owns the property. Certainly, the, the city does not give entities nonprofit status. That's done by, by the state, I believe. And when they incorporate as a nonprofit, it entitles them to certain exemptions from taxes. I know that the property was not, its nonprofit status does not make it exempt from city sales and use taxes. City council, however, did grant some incentives to help, help the project be financially feasible. But that nonprofit status doesn't automatically entitle it to an exemption from city sales and use taxes.
Chris?
Yeah, I, I think Mr. McBroom hit on it that the property tax exemption comes through a state process, through CHAFRA, through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And so, when the CHAFRA program approves their application to become a low-income housing tax credit project, that then therefore is the action that affects those property taxes. That is not a city action per se.
Thank you. So, just so you know, when you have a nonprofit like a church or something of that nature, they don't pay.
Yes, I understand that. Yes, I understand that. But we were not, we were told, we were told they were, they were income, income, income-qualified at the time of the meeting with all of the citizens that went to that meeting. But they also said they didn't give any indication that they were tax-exempt or a nonprofit in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I don't know who told you that, but it wasn't me?
No, I know it wasn't you. But it was, there was, there was, there was city, there were city members there. The city was represented and agreed and, and sat there and told their citizens that we would get, that we would get, that these, that this building was gonna be paying taxes. Now they're not. So, I just, I guess I don't understand how that can change with no, no, no communication, no information that's being sent to the people that were told one thing and now we've got something else happening.
Alright. I really appreciate you coming in. I didn't want to sit here and debate with you. I was trying to get you answers to your questions. And it's not the city that controls that tax exemption. It is their 501(c)(3) status or whatever that status that they have.
Can I leave my email with somebody so that I can get some more information?
Yeah, absolutely. We glad to get, have staff get you any information that you'd like.
Hello, good evening. I'm Charles Wolfensberger. I'm here on, representing, I'm the district manager for the North Range Village Metropolitan District. And so, I'm here just to add a little bit to Ms. Devlin's concerns. We have concerned district board and concerned residents about the, the tax exempt, property tax exempt status granted to the apartment development within the North Range Village Metro District. And to give some additional numbers on that, when Commerce City And to give some additional numbers on that, when Commerce City Council approved the service plan for the district, and it was December 2007, that, in the financial plan for that district, that land that was zoned for the multifamily homes, that was supposed to bring in 20% of the tax revenue to support the bond debt for that district. Right now, the bond debt, the annual payments on that bond debt's 500,000, it's lower than $500,000. When you do the math on that, the revenue that should have been coming from that land to, to help make payments on that bond debt is $116,000 a year, which means that the 485 single-family homes that are in that neighborhood, in that district, they have to shoulder $116,000 of additional tax revenue each year to support that low-income, tax-free housing. So, my concern on behalf of the board is, you know, and, and Ms. Devlin's correct, there were city representatives at this meeting. If the, if the tax approval happens at the state level, I guess my concern is, why was the city involved? I mean, the city had involvement in the approval of this project. Maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding is there's also some kind of city authority or a relationship to the operation of that district, or the operation of that, that, that housing project, but the city was involved with, with the approval of having this project come into the city. And then, now that it's there, you have 485 homeowners, half of that, North Range Village subdivision, that's in your ward. The other half, which is Foxham Village, that is in your ward. You have, those 485 homes are paying 116,000 extra dollars in taxes each year because of that tax, because of that development. So, you know, personally, if they're tax exempt from the water district, the city, the county, the school district, everybody's sharing in that tax burden, but nobody's sharing in the tax burden of the, the, the North Range Village Metro District. In the North Range Village Metro District, that's about 45% of the property tax bill for those homeowners. So, so they get zero tax relief out of this, whereas Potomac Farms, Reunion, Buckley Ranch, you know, we go through all these other districts, they have lower taxes than what North Range Village is going to get because they now have to have a tax-exempt housing project in their, their tax district. So...
Well, I'm glad you came in because I, I have heard grumblings about the tax issue. As you heard a little bit ago, we don't control what were required by state when it comes to a nonprofit, to not charge them tax. It wasn't just the city at the table. The developer that built Foxham Village also was, sold the land to be built by, on by this particular company. So, there are a lot of factors in play. I would also agree that, I don't have any kids in the school district, but I pay for schools. And I wouldn't want to burden any one district, and I will tell you, that one of the biggest things that we are lacking, not in, just in Commerce City, but as a region, is affordable housing for people like teachers and police officers and firemen, and there's nowhere for them to live in our communities. And that also will get expensive if there's not a housing type for those kind of service operators. And I would imagine that your community is not the only community that may see an affordable housing opportunity in the future. We get hammered on this council, day and night, about not having restaurants in this, in this community. Every time we turn around, it's because they want more density, they want more customer base. We need, we need additional people in a, in a congregated area. And so, it doesn't matter if we try to get that housing type, we try to help to have teachers and cops and everyone else have a, a place to stay in our community, and the state law doesn't allow us to tax a nonprofit that, and, and your development, that development is not going to be the only development that has multifamily zoning, and that developer of those other developments could sell that to an affordable home builder that would fall under the same guidelines by the state of Colorado. I, I appreciate your concerns. I wouldn't want, I personally don't want to bear the cost of anybody else either, but unfortunately, we all do in some way, shape, or form, and it wasn't intentionally put there to burden that particular metro district, and the next one won't be put where it goes to burden that particular metro district. And that's the best answer I can give you, is it wasn't done intentionally, but it wasn't, it's not just the city that allowed this to take place. There's a private sale between the developer and the builder to make that happen. We did help facilitate the opportunity to get some affordable housing in our area, and, you know, the next affordable development could be in, in my development where I live, and, and I could be under the same burdens. And, and maybe that is karma, but it is what it is. And I have to stop because your three minutes ran out. I just wanted to respond. Do you have, you have something you want to say? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I, I guess my point is that the city's approval or support of this project was an important piece of that project going in. So, I just, my point is, since you supported that project, I'm sure the state didn't put in a low-income housing project without, they don't just go into cities and just ignore the city's wishes. They come in and they partner with the city to put these projects in, and so, if they had the support from the city, then I think the right thing to do is, since this is something that benefits the entire city, then the entire city should be kicking in that 20% and paying 116,000 to the district. And I guess my disappointment here is that, and my guess is, that was not even on the radar of your finance staff or anybody when you were evaluating this project, and that, in my opinion, is just, that's just basic financial analysis, and, and everybody missed that. And so, a mistake has been made, and it needs to be rectified because you put a serious financial burden on 485 residents, and just that's, it needs to be fixed, so that everybody shares in that financial burden.
Mr. Madera?
Yeah, so, as a metro district, you have your own board, correct?
Correct.
So, your board is the one who takes up these actions? You know, we take a lot of heat for the metro districts because they are the highest taxes in the city. When you look at your property tax, your city tax is not all that much. It probably costs the same as, you know, you would be paying for in trash service. But with the metro district, that is, it has to be, the community that's getting the benefit is where the taxes have to stay, by law. So, you know, I know you're coming here asking for a subsidy from the rest of the city, but by law, we can't do that as a city. As well as being a metro district, you are your own taxing entity, so you know you set your, your mills, your board does. The debt that you take out has to be repaid by those communities that you reside in. So, you know, the fact that you're coming here blaming the city for something that was self-caused by the metro district and that board is a little offensive because, you know, we take a lot of heat for high taxes when the high taxes aren't the city, it's the metro districts. So, as the board, they would have had to approve having that project be part of their district, so I'm not entirely sure.
I, I won't take up first, I know you have a lot of business, I won't take up any more time, but I just, you have a fundamental misunderstanding of districts because districts are approved by the city. You create them.
I've got to cut you off. I'm going to go, you had the three minutes, and I let you, I've got some more comments from council. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I thank you for bringing this to our attention. Now, the city doesn't assess property tax, that's the county. So, I think you need to go to the county and talk to the county assessor on how those, how, how the property was assessed and how they pay that out because there, everyone has assessed mills, and, you know, my mills are high, but the city does not assess the property tax evaluation, that's the county. So, if anything has to be paid out, it's paid out to the county to go towards those mills. So, you need to see what the structure is and how things lay out, because I know I'm on the housing authority, and when this came up, it didn't have anything on it to do with being the tax exempt. It's not a URA situation, and it's not a bided property. So, when this came before us, it was not structured that way. I understand your concerns, and I would be concerned, but when it comes to taxation, this is based on the county's valuation, not the city's. So, our portion is like 3.3% as far as mills, and, and there is a northern infrastructure general improvement district. You have all those different special districts within, you know, those tax assessments, and those should have been laid out, and those are the questions that came up before they even broke ground. May I ask, was, did you ask that question?
We did, and we contacted the county, we had discussions with the city, and even city staff was at an information meeting for the homeowners, and the comments were made that this, they will pay property taxes into the district.
Right. So, you need to, so, so I fire you, the next step, you should go to the county.
The county only collects the taxes, and they only collect the taxes based on the mill that'll be set by the districts. The districts, again, are all, every one of these districts in your city are all specifically approved by city council. They're not created on their own. They can't be created without your permission.
And I, and I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, this, this is a county issue, not a city issue, because we only certain, there's only a certain percentage of the city that we receive off that property. The taxes are collected at the county.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, okay. It's not the county, but, all right.
I want to clarify, I agree with you, it's not the county. If there was a representative from the city, I'd like to know who it was and why they said they would be paying taxes if they weren't, and I'd like to have their side of the story as well. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you know who?
When I say, I did send an email to you, Ms. Frank, in November of 2018, so I've gotten no response on this. So, again, you know, I've been here a couple of times, no responses to emails from staff, from city council. I just, I don't, I can't get anything done unless I show up to a meeting, and then that's, you know, it's unprofessional. Respond to emails, especially when they're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and, and significant issues with your city. I'm not complaining about somebody's car parked in front of my house, I'm talking about $100,000 issues with homeowners, so.
Thanks for coming in tonight. All right, is there anyone in the audience who, Guillermo, I know better, you were here when that list was there.
Yeah.
I'm going to let you talk.
I appreciate it, ma'am.
But, when, when you come in and you want to talk, please sign up. Go ahead.
14122 East 102nd Place. I live in that location. We never got any information from anybody, and this type of conversation, every one of those households should get the information that you were talking about, because it's, it's going to grow, okay? And that's because people don't get the right information from anybody, neither HOA or whatever they call it, okay? The city does this, the state does this, the county does this, and nothing is ever settled. Why don't you go to the legislature and see how this can be straightened out? Because we are low on housing, and we're going to get a lot more, okay? And that's got to come from the state in perspective. Responsibility is at the top. The data that's there, I would say, the county, the city, get together and go ask the legislature to help you out. Let's not, you, you have the strength of the community because you're the ones, you know, that have to make these hard decisions whether people are there or not, okay? That's just a little bit of advice. The other thing is, remember that guard rail that I talked to you about?
Yep.
Okay? They fixed it.
Good.
Now, this last snowstorm, they hit it, okay? If it hadn't been fixed with your assistance, you know, that resistance on that car probably would have maybe caused the death.
The one on the highway, too?
Yeah. So, thank you, thank the people that fixed it, and just respond. We need to get together as a city and not do this. How can we use the strength of what you have here?
I don't want the county to leave yet if we're pointing fingers at them.
No, no, hey, come on.
He's walking out.
We're all, we're all responsible.
I, I, I don't disagree.
We complain about the homeless, we complain about this, we complain about that, but at the same time, we have to come up with solutions. And it's not just saying, they do it, they do it, it's how do we straighten out this problem together? And, you know, I think that we can do that. We, you're, we're a growing city, and this is not the only problems that we're going to have. These types of organizations are going to keep coming as the city grows, okay? Let's learn from these mistakes that we make, but improve on them, and that, you've got a city manager to make, and you've got a lawyer to make some recommendations as to how that can be done. That's all I'm saying, mayor.
Thanks, Guillermo.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up? Come on up.
Today, I just wanted to remind city councils, well, my name is Austin Rollison, I live at 7095 Pontiac Street, and I just wanted to remind city council and all the city employees when entering these negotiations with extraction oil and gas, as well as considering anything that comes up from those negotiations, the vast and great resources and, that come from that, whether it be energy or jobs or wells, the economic boost that bringing these developments into our communities bring. We've seen it all over the state of how important bringing these into our communities are. We've seen how greatly has vastly grown what they're doing, and it's bringing their economy higher than they've seen in quite a while. And just wanted to remind everybody how important it is, especially with last Wednesday, where we saw thousands of people without power, and without heat, and without electricity, how important these things are in our community and as our state as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nick Klebenstein, and I live at 14178 Sunblaze Loop in Broomfield, Colorado. I wanted to thank you very much for your time this evening and allowing me to speak, and as you consider the operator agreement, I'd like to share some perspectives from Broomfield because we went through this process just a couple of years ago. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about the experience that we had in Broomfield. It was an exhaustive negotiation, well over two years in the making. We formed a task force in Broomfield, and that task force came up with a number of recommendations that council considered when they put together the MOU and negotiated with extraction oil and gas. We've seen protections for our residents that are nearly double what the current COGCC regulations are, and the only people that aren't talking about the success of that MOU and operator agreement are the activists that would like to shut down oil and gas in the state. And I'm here to encourage you to steer away from the partisan politics that we're looking at at the Capitol. I actually came from there today, and it doesn't take a lot to see what those partisan politics are when all of the same folks who, just a few months ago, were talking about Proposition 112, and they are now running away from that as fast as they possibly can in support of Senate Bill 181. So, I, I would encourage you to, to take a comprehensive collaborative approach with the operator and go through those details because it can work to protect, protect residents from, with those MOUs. I'd also like to commend the city as well as the operator for hosting a wonderful event back in December. I actually attended that event, and I also attended the, the meeting that Broomfield held, and I would say that Commerce City did an excellent job of demonstrating what was going to be happening in the city, and I've actually arranged tours of rigs, and I've found that people who are very concerned when going into one of those tours about what happens on those rig sites are much less concerned when they find out what actually goes on there and the process that's at hand. So, I commend the city for that. Thank you very much for your time, and I'd like to respect your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a comment there, Steve? Is there anyone else? Any other citizen communication? All right, seeing none, we're moving on. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial, they are presented to self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Madera.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. My attorney, please read the titles.
Resolution 2019-28, resolution finding substantial compliance of an annexation petition and setting a public hearing to determine if the proposed annexation complies with statutory requirements for such annexation, AN 25219. Resolution 2019-32, resolution approving rules of procedure for the Commerce City Liquor Licensing Authority and repealing resolution 2007-41.
Thank you. All right. I'll ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously. Seven, I, two abstain or two absent. So takes us to resolutions. Start with resolution 2019-13, support for public art at Tower Road. I'd like to invite the public art consultant Kendall Peterson forward to make a presentation. Hi, Kendall. Get Ed up here, too.
Sorry, that?
Said you can get Ed up here, too.
Yeah, Ed, if you want it. My name is Kendall Peterson. As I mentioned, I'm a resident of actually neighboring Stapleton. So, um, thank you, mayor and members of city council. We're here to present something completely different for you all from your usual agenda items. So, um, as you know, we have, um, some funding for, uh, public art at Tower Road. Um, it's a big, long road and we did a lot of discussion about where to place, uh, any works of art. Um, these are the, um, members of the selection committee. Um, we also had staff members that were there. So, um, the meeting that we had to determine, we, we had several meetings. It's a, it's a process. Um, we had several meetings to determine criteria for the call for artists. We determined that we would go for regional artists, um, which means Colorado and neighboring states. Um, there are about seven of us, seven of the different states. And also, we determined that we would like to place artwork, um, along the median in, on Tower Road. It's quite a sizable margin, um, median, and there's plenty of room for artwork. We also worked with Public Works to make sure that was gonna be okay. Um, and the budget was, um, $135,000 all-inclusive. So, um, we did do a selection of, we, we, we sent out a request for qualifications and, um, five artists were, um, selected as semifinalists. They were given an honorarium of $1,000 to present a proposal to us. And, um, we reviewed their proposals. Uh, I don't have the date here. I'm sorry for that. But a quorum was present and our, um, discussion was lively and ended up being unanimous decision. So these are just images of Tower Road and the, and the, um, the improvements that were done. So the locations that we were looking at, uh, the first one, um, is as you're going north on Tower Road at 81st and Tower. Um, we were looking to place some kind of artwork in the median right about, um, as, as you start entering into Commerce City as a sort of a gateway piece. That was what, um, people were really interested in, in having. Because while the area is not populated, um, much right now, it will become a major thoroughfare. And I think people wanted to make sure that you knew you were entering into Commerce City. Similarly, we were going to place an artwork at 804th at the end of the construction area. And then someplace, we will left it up to the artist to decide. Um, we wanted to make sure that there was another third piece in the medians, um, as you go on. So it would be sort of a sequential sort of experience as you drove down the road. Um, one of the things that came up, we did look at putting artwork along the pathways and that sort of thing. But we were worried that it would get swallowed up by not only the, the great vistas there, uh, right now, but eventually by development coming in. So we wanted to make sure that it would be something very visible for the, for the funding that was provided. And feel free to come in if you need to. So we said, we had five presentations. Um, three of the artists were from Colorado. I won't go into great detail on these, but, um, you can kind of read along with me. Kevin Schaefer of Leadville was selected because he did these sort of natural grass area, uh, looking, um, artworks. Um, Stephen Shackman did more of a contemporary approach. Um, and Wayne Salgi from Loveland had a more figural work. Um, he did, um, figural bronzes. And they were proposed as, um, people that were sort of, they were kind of comical and humorous, actually. And they, and people really enjoyed them. Uh, Steve Sutherland from Norman, Oklahoma came and proposed. Um, he had a couple of different types of sculptures. One was a feather, one was a guitar, and one was a dream catcher. Um, and then finally, Mark Horst from Albuquerque, New Mexico proposed, um, People's Favorite, um, which was three areas where we would have stylized sort of grasses that are native to the area. One is a milkweed leaf, one is a grandma grass leaf. I'm sorry, not a leaf. It's the actual full, um, grass stalk. And then a cottonwood leaf. And they would be constructed out of steel and, and/or aluminum. And they would be painted, so they would be quite colorful. Uh, again, I won't go into a lot of detail, but I just put this in here so you can trust that there was a great deal of discussion about all of the different proposals. And there were, um, people appreciated all of the proposals, but there were a lot of cons to some of them. Uh, the favorite, the second favorite was Kevin Schaefer's. It was incredibly, um, the, the project had, uh, an incredible number of sculptures involved with it. Uh, Stephen Shackman, people were concerned that it maybe was too much of a tower for Tower Road and a little too contemporary for the site. And then Wayne Salgi, um, they loved his work, but it was, um, they, I think it was much better suited for a park, someplace where you could go on foot. Steve Sutherland was sort of, um, I think people really loved his sculptures. They were quite whimsical, but it didn't really connect with the site the same way that, um, Mark Horst did. Um, Mark Horst, when he presented, um, he actually, and I think we were gonna show you a little video. He showed the effect that would happen as you drive past these sculptures, as you, um, commute, um, in and out of Commerce City. A lot of the, uh, the, the whole group was very enthusiastic about this. It was colorful, it was big, it was very, um, welcoming. It gave people a feeling of optimism and hope for the community and, and sort of the idea that you've arrived in Commerce City. Um, and, and a place that is important. Um, the only thing was, uh, that was of a slight concern to the group was that the sculptor is actually from Albuquerque. But the big positive is that every single bit of artwork will be fabricated here in Commerce City. The company he chose to fabricate the artwork is called Juno Works and they've moved to Commerce City. And, um, so all of the funds that go into the materials and the fabrication will stay here in Commerce City, which none of the other artists were going to do. So it was pretty, pretty cool, um, uh, add, added bonus. So this is sort of a, an image of what, what, um, was proposed. Um, we, uh, he, basically what he takes is the veins of the, of these beautiful leaves. And then he kind of abstracts them and he tilted them out. These are, uh, images of the actual size that you'll have. And we will be engineering the basis to fit inside each of the, um, different median areas. Um, and they will be, the colors on this is not appropriate. Uh, I think they'll be quite, um, quite lively colors. So this is sort of a symbol of, uh, I mean, a picture of how they will be presented. They're quite large and they, they have a repeated imagery. And then this is the, will it work here? There you go. Yeah. So as you drive past it, um, you'll be able to see this patterning between the leaves and the different colors. And it's really quite lovely, the way you'll get this sort of rhythmic effect as you drive past it. Um, and these are approximately 10 feet in height. So this would be coming towards, towards Commerce City, passing past it and then, um, and then turning around, getting the other, the other view. Oh, I think I need to go, yeah, there we go. So, um, after quite a bit of discussion, the group really, really enthusiastically and wholeheartedly put all of their, um, all of their yays to, uh, Mark Horst. And, um, if you want to add one more?
There was also a question about lighting.
Yeah, lighting. Oh, that's right. And that, uh, that when it went to the cultural council, we have been given, and a, um, a recommendation from the cultural council that if we can find funding for lighting, that they would like them to be slightly uplifted. So it would be, um, something that you can see in the evening as well as in the daytime. Great. Thank you for adding that. So, uh, the cultural council reviewed it on February 12th and gave unanimous approval. Um, and now we are coming to you for further, um, for further approvals and to move this forward. And then once, um, once we have our answers here, that will be the point at which we go into a contract with the artist and I will continue to, uh, see the project through to the finish. So, any questions?
Great. Thank you. Any questions, um, on the presentation from the council? Seeing none. The only question I, I guess that I would have is, uh, has anybody on our staff or through the cultural council vetted anything with united power as to whether there's power in those medians? Um, whether there would have to be boring done or, or what to be able to provide a power source for the lighting? If the lighting could be installed. So I'm just trying to figure out what those limitations may or may not be.
We can certainly explore that. Uh, you're, you're spot on, mayor. I don't believe we have power in the medians, but there might be some alternative ways to power some uplighting.
Right. And, and now they've got some pretty, uh, cool solar type opportunities as well, so.
We will certainly investigate all the possibilities and, um, and, and make sure that it's a reasonable cost and, and that it'll stick around. Solar is great. Uh, it, it doesn't have the longevity that, that electrical power does at this point. So that'll be part of our investigation when we go through the, the whole contracting process for sure and engineering as well.
Awesome. I, I appreciate that and we'll look forward to an update on any potential lighting.
Absolutely.
So, uh, with that said, is there, uh, let me see, is there anyone in the audience who has, has any questions on, on the, uh, design that's brought forward to the council on this resolution for public art in Tower Road? No, seeing none. Um, I, I do have a comment. Uh, well, let me, let me wait. I'm gonna open it up for a motion on resolution 2019-13. Councilwoman Wadiola.
Councilwoman?
Councilman.
Oh.
I wouldn't call you councilwoman. Councilman Wadiola.
Uh, motion to accept the recommendations from the cultural council, um, for the art piece on Tower Road.
And you know what happens? Frank's number, she pops up and I'm thinking councilwoman, so my mistake. I, I can tell the difference. At least I think. Well, uh, councilwoman, Councilman Frank?
I'll second the motion for resolution 2019-13.
Thanks. I'm going with Person from now on. Get me out of hot water. I have a motion and a second. I want to go to comment. Um, any discussion from council? Uh, I, I do want to let you know I will be supportive. Um, I'm, I'm really glad, growing up in this community, uh, to finally start seeing some of the art pieces. And I thought that the, the, um, kites that were over by Pioneer Park, I thought that was really cool. That was one of our first ones. But then after seeing the bison up at, uh, the rec center and, and seeing the eagles over at Eagle Point, um, some of the stuff's really starting to get more elaborate. It, people are starting to take notice and, and our community needed some livening up with some art. So, uh, very appreciative of the cultural council and thankful that, um, the council agreed to, uh, put the piece in for all new development to contribute a certain percentage to public art so that we can have some of these nice things when you're driving through our community. So, uh, thank you and I will be supportive. Um, Councilwoman Frank, or is Councilperson Frank? You're on there. You're lit up. Councilperson Teeter?
Thank you, mayor. I, um, I've been looking at this for the first time. I didn't miss it, this, this part of the segment on my agenda, but this is very beautiful. Like the, I like those sculptures and I think that is gonna be outstanding.
Thank you.
Councilperson Elliot?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation this evening. And just to note that when we looked at these sculptures, it was a preliminary, uh, idea thinking, well, you know, as far as, um, the gateway to Commerce City, it would be a good idea to have some type of lighting installed. And so I think for future uses, um, any type of, uh, artwork that we're looking to do within medians or nearby, I think that's something we should probably look into and probably account for in the beginning. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas. Councilperson Douglas.
Thank you. Uh, yes, this is a great, uh, our artwork, uh, is amazing in Commerce City. And I've been, um, across this country and people travel places just to go see the art that's in those areas. And it's, um, phenomenal. You, and to be over, uh, in Orvada and to hear, hey, I drove down Highway 2 in the middle of the night and I saw these LED color lights at a rec center. I can stand, uh, as I come up Highway 2 and 104th, there's a certain clear, open area where you can see from that distance the rec center because of the, because of the light. And, and then the, also the light that, that, uh, that's, that, uh, lights up the display as well. So I, I commend you guys for taking the time and actually going through the process of, of getting folks to are very creative. Because it's hard out there. You know, a lot of people out there want the artwork to, you know, displayed. But the time and, uh, that you guys dedicate to this shows the results of how and much you guys care. Because this, this is a legacy that's gonna continue and people will see that. And this, you know, it's, it's gonna, well, we're already on a map already, but this is really gonna make those access points in Commerce City. Now we need something on Ta, on, on Gobek. Can you think about that one? Appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, I want to thank you, Mr. Douglas. I actually thought you were gonna get into a debate about solar and it not being adequate and the.
No, you've already, no, you haven't.
You know, I just, I saw that coming because the oil and gas guys were in the back doing the fist pump that this gallon wants for sustainable energy. And I couldn't pass that one up. So, uh, I shouldn't even go there. We have enough on our plate with the oil and gas. And I'm just trying to lighten the mood a little bit. But I do have a motion and a second. Is there a title that needs to be read there, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it is resolution 2019-13, resolution declaring support of public art installation for Tower Road.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion's carried. Good work. Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Look for Frontera Park coming soon.
When are we gonna see the art? When are we, uh, potentially gonna see it installed?
Um, the idea is that we'll have it installed hopefully before snow flies. That's the, it really depends on how fast we get through the contracting and then all the engineering and everything. So we'll, we'll keep you posted for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for being able to participate in this project. It was a lot of fun. It's a very significant piece in a very significant location. It's gonna make a national impression. And at the same time, I'd like to also make a plea. The corner of 60th and Vasquez on the northeast corner is crying out for a piece of art. We need to do something there. And that's just my personal opinion.
You know, we keep getting in trouble for the last piece of art that we put at that intersection.
Is that right?
Yeah. It looks like a camera. Has flashes.
Oh, yeah. Not quite the same thing.
No, I agree with you. And, and, uh, the only downside to that one, Ed, is when we talk about the right of way for State Highway 85, it is a state highway. We don't have jurisdiction. Um, however, we do see some improvements going in there in the near future. And it would be a matter of, uh, getting some recommendations, I think, from the cultural council and then sitting down with some C.DOT commissioners to see what it would take. They may not allow that in their right of way because of the speeds and the volume. But it's something that we could pursue. We could at least ask.
It's another gateway to the city and I think it is an important, uh, location.
Sure.
To represent us. But it's good to know and I'm ready to work on that.
270 would be awesome for some art because while everybody's parked on there because it doesn't move. it doesn't move, you could really take in the art and not be so frustrated...
That's right, something to do while you're waiting for the traffic to move.
That's right. Thanks again, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2206, Reappropriation for Economic Development Incentives. Ah, golly, that one just hit a nerve. I want to make sure that you all know that that incentive is not for a multifamily, tax-exempt, um, type facility that, uh, will cause us the same kind of grief that we just went through, all right? It's for something other that shouldn't have those same kind of implications. Is there anyone on council that has any questions? Mr. Douglas?
No, this one before.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter? No? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
This is on first reading?
Yep.
Hold on. You got me confused there. A second. Apologize. 2206.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to, to approve ordinance 2206 on first reading?
Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2206 on first reading. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2206, An Ordinance Amending the 2019 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating Portions of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the General Fund in the Amount of $517,950 for Costs Associated with Economic Development Incentives and Authorization of the Expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2206 is introduced unanimously seven to zero with two absent. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. We've already had our monthly oil and gas update and I'd like to ask if any, uh, council members have any business to bring forth to council at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Um, no, I didn't have any, but since, uh, you called my name...
Well, you're lit up.
Well, I...
Do you just leave it on all the time?
No, you told me to push the button, I did, I thought I canceled, but, uh, I just, um, looked, uh, I was looking through my notes back in March 2000, uh, March 20th, 2017 on the North Range meeting we had. And in that discussion, it didn't show anything at all as far as, uh, any malady or anything like that, it just basically, uh, I sent it out to, to council and to staff there. Um, pretty much going over, hold on. Get my, uh, bearings down here. Uh, let's see here. Shows a light tech credit and, um, number of units and, let's get down here to see exactly, a hundred percent rebate and 3.5 percent sales and use tax, no property tax, waiver of rebuilding permit fees, a waiver of building plant check fees and, uh, city requesting was $983,000. So, uh, in our documentation as far as, even with the housing authority, nothing was brought up that had to do with, uh, offset or, uh, anything being exempt for property tax that night. Um, and, uh, this is brought to us in several different levels and, like I said, going through the notes here, it doesn't at all reflect what was brought to us today and, uh, so those are the things that we don't hear about until after the process. And so I think, um, going forward, we really are going to have to go through a breakdown to see exactly when this product is, when it's built and it functions, what does it serve towards paying for the debt that, uh, those residents are going to use as far as safety services, so, appreciate that.
I would, uh, agree with Mr. Douglas. I don't think this issue is, um, resolved as of today. I think it's something that we need some background and, and the council needs to be able to, uh, understand the process, um, for that tax exempt, how it would affect other communities when, when something like this is done. And, um, you know, how could the, how could the developer, um, the developer not know? And, uh, the developer's the one who creates the metro district and there's all kinds of questions that I have internally, so I think it would probably be relevant if staff could give us just some kind of a breakdown of exactly how that process works and, and, um, if anything went wrong or if everything went right and, and what, uh, for us to, how to, how to understand that offset. Because I don't want residents in that neighborhood thinking that they're having to, um, pay more because the multifamily doesn't have to pay at all. Um, and I, I get the, the nonprofit status and everything else, um, but I, I think it's more of, uh, a fairness and equality check by the residents that came in tonight. And so if we could just have something to help us to better, um, explain the process, um, I think that would be beneficial, uh, so that, um, we can get that information to Councilperson Frank so she can make that response that's been waiting for so long, all right? All righty.
Mr. Madera?
Yeah, that's, one thing I was going to have us, uh, talk about metro district again and, um, you know, try to think of ways to solve some of the fundamental flaws that are involved with them because, you know, they are made by the developers and they take them, bring them to us and then we do approve initial, uh, bond limits. But, um, I see that that's already on the calendar for April 8th, so, um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, in this last, uh, storm that we had, a lot of the lights have been blown off center so you can't see them. You know, one of those was on, um, Highway 2 going north on 112. You know, the, the lights are pretty much just black because they're facing sideways. So, you know, if we can get someone out to, uh, take a look at those.
Signal lights, right? Signal lights.
Signal lights.
Yes, go ahead, Robert.
Yes, uh, the metro district item on the agenda on April 8th was initially entered as a different form of discussion. Um, that has since been transitioned to my office, but the date has not changed. Uh, it was going to be an update on what you asked for at the retreat, that won't be ready by April 8th, so that is going to be moving on from April 8th to provide a more comprehensive update that involves some stakeholder feedback. Originally had been presented as a actual stakeholder presentation, um, but we're reformatting that just so you're, as you're looking forward.
Thank you. Brian, did you have something?
I was just going to cut.
All right. Mr. Douglas, his light popped up, can we get that checked?
No, I actually did press, press a button. Am I okay to speak?
Yeah, you're okay to speak.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I want to give, uh, credit to the, our Public Works Department on clearing the roads. Uh, I wasn't here on Wednesday, but coming back and actually having to dig a car out that was stuck. I do appreciate them coming by on the, on the priority two and threes, but I think we should also make sure we, uh, update our routes that are priority in areas that are, have narrow roads in the historic part of the city. I think we, for areas, I wouldn't say we failed, but, uh, because our city has grown and we, actually, we have added so many lane miles over the years, uh, has made it very difficult, so, I'm not sure if we, if we could, um, uh, the council could ask for, uh, in, in the budget for Public Works, uh, more equipment to, uh, have, uh, very accessibility to those areas, because some of those streets are narrow and maybe a certain different type of vehicle could get down to those areas would be more accessible instead of the big trucks we have. Uh, because I did travel in, in an area that, um, myself and Councilman Madera, uh, we had a phone call from a resident and I, myself drove my car over there and I got through the first time, second time I got stuck. Um, what I could see there was, that was a, a major problem. And then being so close to the service center, uh, my thoughts were at least, uh, through passing, they could get to it, but, you know, like I said, our city has added so many mile, um, lane miles, that's hard for me to, to judge, but I think if we could update our snow trooper, um, situation and just a whole layout to, uh, reassure the historic part of our city gets the same, uh, level of plowing as the north does.
Go ahead.
Unless there's an objection from council, we can bring some information back about the city's current snow plan, how it operates, uh, some, some idea of, of the cost operate that snow plan. Uh, I will tell you that the city's evaluated as a whole, priorities given to streets citywide as a whole, uh, but newer council members may not have, uh, had us present the snow plan to you, so we can do that, uh, and we can do it in time so that if you want to increase the level of service as part of that snow plan, you'd have time to do that as part of the budget process.
Thank you, Brian. Um, I did want to speak a little bit on a couple of things, the storm for one. Um, you know, when we built, uh, Bell Creek, um, I know that, uh, Public Works staff at that time was looking at things like unimogs and different type of equipment for moving snow because of some of the narrower areas with the alleyways and some of the narrower streets because of the type of development it is. Um, I think you went with a smaller plow, um, for that area, did we not? I, I remember, I thought we bought a single axle and, and run a single axle through Bell Creek, is that right, Joe?
I have to check that.
All right. Um, so, uh, I, I want to thank our snow crews, um, for the effort. Um, it was a strange storm. Um, unfortunately, there was a lot of drifting on 96th Avenue. Um, I would let the residents know, if there's road closed signs up, don't go around the barricades because I don't know how many vehicles we pulled out. And then those vehicles were towed to King Supers and, uh, let the owners know where their vehicles were. Um, people were still upset that we towed them, but we didn't charge them for it and, you know, it was a courtesy tow. And, uh, if you go around a barricade in Commerce City and you get stuck and we have to tow you so that we can plow the road, um, you're probably lucky you just got a courtesy tow. And I'll leave it at that. The other thing that was brought up was Highway 2. Uh, Mr. Serna had come in and talked about the guardrail being damaged, um, getting the guardrail fixed and then having it damaged again. I'd like to make sure that staff goes out and takes a look at that guardrail, um, see if it needs any, uh, type of improvement. And we on council are constantly getting, um, annihilated with, how come the speed limit's so low? It used to be 55, now it's 45. A lot of configurations have changed, there's more traffic, there's no visible or physical medians, um, and things like guardrails that are being damaged regularly. Um, I, I know we asked for a speed study, don't know if you have an update or you could tell us, uh, what we're looking at for time-wise to get that information, um, to consider whether we raise the speed limit or not. But, uh, safety aspects always come first and that's, uh, important for our residents to know. So if you can get back to us on that, Brian, I'd appreciate it. Councilwoman Elliott?
I'm the last one. All right. So, I've contemplated this for a number of months and it's been a struggle. Um, I've talked with Mayor about this too, at great lengths and even timing was always an issue as far as when should I do this, can I, can I finish out my term? Um, you know, I'm a single parent to my kids, I'm in school right now, I work full-time and with council and it's just really been a struggle. And so I sit up here with a, a heavy heart.
Take your time.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Then I wanted to, um, announce my resignation effective, uh, April 1st. I truly take a lot of pride in this seat. Um, I want to thank the citizens of Commerce City that believed in me, not once, but twice. And, you know, it was, I didn't want to cry, so, I apologize for that, but, you know, I've, I've struggled with this for a number of months and it was funny because I had mentioned it to, that, to Sean just recently that I didn't want to make an announcement, um, before everyone went to DC, um, to meet with our, our legislative bodies up there because I was going to be, um, acting mayor, so I wanted to get some stuff done before, uh, that happened. But Sean, you've known me for a long time and you know that this is hard for me, but it's, it's just a matter of time. It's just, you know, I, I'm, I'm raising a 14-year-old son, um, things have been difficult since his father passed away in 2015. Uh, my kids have, have had to rely on me heavily. Um, and I'm, I take pride in the fact that I've been able to, to, to do all those things, um, even up to this point, but it's really been hard. It's been stressful, it's been, uh, it's just been difficult and I've, I've lost a sense of myself to a point and I don't want to be that person. I want to go out with my head held high and know that I try to make, uh, an impact on this city, uh, that I've grown up and grew to love. And so, um, with that, I just want to, um, to leave it at that. I do want to, um, inquire as far as my participation with the Emergency Services Task Force. You know, um, I still, I still plan to continue participation on, in that task force at a different capacity. And so I just would like council support in continuum because there's a lot of other components that have been, um, adding to the soup mix as we've talked about in our meetings that we're making soup and, uh, we just keep getting more players that are involved, are interested in being involved in, in what we have, um, what our vision is as far as a resource center or whatever that turns out to be. The resource center seems to be the most tangible, uh, project right now, if you will, because we've got, uh, other nonprofit organizations that are ready to, uh, head this off or, you know, spearhead this. And so, um, that's near and dear to my heart and I feel like with, um, and that's another reason, with stepping off of council, I have a different, um, participation level where I don't have to necessarily consistently try to represent you all. Um, not that I don't appreciate the support, but it's, it's, I, I'm just in a different point in my life right now. Going to school is definitely targeted towards, uh, those types of efforts. Social work is, is, uh, my plan for my, uh, pursuing my degree in. And so, um, there you have it.
You know, I'd like to start off by, uh, first of all, thanking Crystal for all of her years of service. Uh, we're talking seven and a half years, um, of commitment as a single mom, working single mom, dealing with some of her older children with ailments, um, her former husband passing away, uh, her children's father, you know, she's been through a ton, but I have to give her credit. Um, she has stood up to everything that she needed to stand up to on this council. She's done a phenomenal job, um, and I would be the first to testify that there wouldn't be a steam room without her. So all of you that like steam room, that's on her. Um, but I've known Crystal pretty much my entire life and, uh, for her to step up and do what she did, uh, it's just as hard to step down. And given your commitments and everything else, um, I know, uh, after so many years, I don't, you know, you never want anybody to get angry, but it's really hard and I don't think the average resident understands that on one hand you get hammered because you don't have restaurants and then on the other hand, you, you get hammered because you're trying to get the wrong restaurant and, and so, we're in a position where not very often do people recognize the effort that you put in, the amount of late nights that you put in. And, um, I know, my, my family tells me all the time, you know, um, can't wait till you're not on council anymore so that you don't miss anniversaries and birthdays and all those things. And then the newer council members probably don't understand that right now, but you will after you put that kind of tenure in to doing the job. Um, it's not an easy job, um, most of the time it's very thankless. Uh, but tonight I want to thank Councilwoman Elliott for everything she's done for this city. She's done an outstanding job during her tenure. So thank you, Councilwoman. Secondly, I would ask for a motion to include having the staff put together, um, a little get-together with Crystal's family and friends and, and members of the community that would like to attend in the foyer for the next regular council meeting and to also include in the... in the foyer for the next regular council meeting, and to also include in the agenda for the next regular council meeting, an opportunity to recognize Councilwoman Elliott and all of her efforts for what she's done for the city. Is there a motion? I've got a lot of people that want to speak, so raise your hand if you want to make a motion. Mr. Madera.
Yeah, I'd moved to have a party for Crystal, or with Crystal.
All right, Mr. Wardiola.
I'll second that.
All right, I'm a motion and second to have a gathering and a reception and a part of the agenda that will allow for recognition of outgoing Councilwoman Crystal Elliott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Really, Steve?
No.
I know. Motion's carried unanimously. We all want to make sure that Crystal gets sent off with the pride and prejudice that she deserves for the work that she has done for this community, so thank you, Crystal. I truly appreciate it. You've been a, you've been a good councilperson. Mr. Teeter.
Well, this surprised me, Crystal, but I want you to look back on the last seven and a half years and see what we did. We did a lot, we got a lot accomplished. You can look back over the years before us, and I think the last seven years, the last, these two last councils, we accomplished a lot for this city, and it's stuff we're going to see forever, and it's going to help people and residents forever in Commerce City, and I'll miss you, babe.
Mr. Madera.
I was actually still for the motion, but we're doing this right now.
Well, we're going to do it again at the next council meeting, but you can.
Okay, I'll save my speech.
Put it on record what you think.
For the next meeting. I don't want to cry tonight.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, I've served with Crystal these last two terms, and I'm shocked. To the extent I see that there has been some, you know, for all, there's struggle when it comes to family balance, I'm blessed that, you know, once you're a parent, you're always a parent, but not to have young kids in the house because I know how much time and dedication it takes to raise a child and being a single parent. I know the struggles my mom went through raising four kids, and it's hard, and in today's age, times, that makes it even harder because there's a lot of things happening, and you want your kid to succeed and be the young man that you want him to be. Your daughters are doing a great, amazing things, and you have brought a lot of things to the table and that we both have brought forward, and I'm going to continue to carry that torch to get that intersection that you have promised residents of the northern area. I think that is needed, but just the vision and the focus that you have brought forward to this council has been great, and it's been good to serve with you. You're a great friend, and I want to continue that relationship, and also your effort on the task force, and because it's something that the city needs, so I'm more than happy to support you continuing those efforts because we do need to focus on that, and that is where your heart is, and I see the city is where your heart is as well, so this, I'm going to take it back from this as well, so.
Well, Crystal, all I would say is please let your family and friends know the upcoming agenda, after it gets printed, you'll have some times of when the reception will be. Have them be, ask those folks to be here that you want to be here so that they can witness all of the achievements that we want to honor you for the last seven and a half years, and you have been a great friend and a great colleague, and the city wouldn't be where it's at today if it wasn't for you being part of this team, so thank you. All right, let's see, with that said, council business, I know we're at the end of it, but I can't help to bring up, I keep hearing all the fracking that's going on in Commerce City. I think it's very, very important for me to state at this time, in all the years that I've been here, I don't, I can't recall a single well that's been drilled, let alone fracked, in Commerce City. I know there are some planned, and there are permits that are being requested at the state level, and none that have been given at the city level, but I think for all of our residents, I'd like to know when the last well was drilled in Commerce City, if we can find that information, but I know we haven't had any fracked in Commerce City. There was a well that sits over by Sonic that's on an unincorporated Adams County piece of property, but as far as Commerce City, we haven't allowed, or not that we haven't allowed, we haven't had any permits and everything else, so we're going through a process where it's something that we're not used to. It's not something that I'm opposed to, but I want it to be safe, and I want to honor property rights, so we get people up here that are pick a side. I'm not going to pick a side. I know we need the industry, but I also want to make our community safe in the process, and I don't think that that's said enough. We get put on notice of not taking a stand on things, and sometimes the stand shouldn't be one or the other. We should try to work through the process so that we can have the best benefit to our residents, that's our job, and we're limited by certain state laws, and we know there's a lot going on at the legislature and everything that's happening, but I think it's important to state that even though, and I was, I heard a lady the other day, I was at a yard sale or something, and she's like, oh my God, the water's got to be bad because of all the fracking that's going on in our area. Well, we haven't had any fracking, and that's why we have the speaker series, to try to bring in the professionals, and the intent of that is to have the professionals in the field of whether it's water or the refuge or fire response and everything else so that we can hear what their concerns are from partnering agencies, and so please bear with us through the process. There was also concerns about us going into that executive session. That executive session is for us to be able to try to best protect our residents but still fall within the guidelines of the law, and so, you know, everybody thinks that we're meeting with oil and gas operators. We're not, there's not a single one of us that has been meeting with oil and gas operators. Our staff has been tasked with that and kept at arm's reach from us for a reason, and the purpose is so that we can serve our residents in the best way possible, but we do have to attend to business of the city, and so, you know, I just would ask that everybody be respectful, honorable to both sides so that we can get through the process and do our job, and that's where I was going with my little rant for this evening. With that said, I'm going to go into reports. Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send a fairly brief city manager report towards the end of last week. It was an unusual week because of the storm. I want to echo comments earlier from council and give out tremendous thanks and kudos to our snow team and to the police department. We activated the incident command system throughout the event. The city's emergency operations center was open and active for about 24 hours straight, I think. As noted, there is still quite a bit of follow-up work we need to do, correcting damages as a result of the storm. Part of the incident command system is generating an after-action report, so it'll have good information in it about ways we can manage a storm like that better. It'll collect a lot of good, useful information, and I'll share as much of that with city council as I can when we have it, so thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Brian. I was just curious, how many of our staff was actually in that command center all 24 hours?
Well, the emergency operations center has a fairly limited staff, five or six folks, but then there's, you know, the army of people that are out in the field. For every person who drove around the barricade on 96th and got stuck, it took tremendous resources to get them unstuck, so it was a harried 12 hours for our folks. I think they did a terrific job in a very dangerous storm, but we can include some of the information about how many staff worked the storm. Certainly, the 12-hour shifts started early that Wednesday morning, so it was, I know they're all still tired, and yet we still have some follow-up work to do. Thank you.
Robert.
I just wanted to note that on next Monday's study session, we'll include some information about the council vacancy process and updating that policy if council wanted to do so. I also wanted to note that last, this year, council authorized an assistant city attorney in my office, and that hiring process is complete, and on Tuesday, Brian Swan, who's currently a judicial clerk in Jefferson County, will be joining us to fill out a lot of the work to be done there, so I wanted to thank you for that and let you know we filled the position, so thank you.
Please bring him in so we can have him introduced as part of the team.
I will, absolutely.
Thank you. I have a few things tonight. First and foremost, I always make it a point to thank the residents for allowing us the opportunity to go to Washington DC. We had our legislative meetings, and most of us only attended the legislative meetings, and we met with all of our congressional delegates in the Senate and in Congress. However, we also met with Federal Railroad Administration, the US Army, you know, railroad administration was to try to get them to understand that we need to get them to stop blocking our tracks. We need their help in creating efforts to reduce blocked crossings, and it's a complaint we constantly hear from our residents, and we did go in force to help try to alleviate some of the blocked crossings in Washington DC with the Federal Railroad Administration. We met with the Army at the Pentagon, and that is to continue with efforts on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, the cleanup components, supporting the refuge management team and some of the new trail systems and a lot of things like that, so we met with the Army on those concerns. We met with Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife, Federal Fish and Wildlife, on different aspects of improving maybe some additional species to be put on the refuge, support for Dave Lucas and his staff, some potential onsite temporary housing for people that are building trails and things of that nature. We continue to try to help get them to understand why we need some different zonings that would be allowed around the stadium for office-type buildings and things of that nature. Department of Transportation, we pushed really hard for the Infra grant. It's in process right now. We will let you know as that comes around, but we also got our congressional delegates to all write letters and to make phone calls to the DOT to support our Infra grant, and I also talked with the county commissioners while I was out there, at least with Odericio, and we'd like to put together a contingency of a regional team to push for regional needs to go out and lobby for those needs, but all in all, and we met with several other different departments, Department of Housing, I'd have to look through the book, but it was non-stop meetings from the time I got there until I got on the plane to come home. I want the residents to know, I feel that the time was spent very well. We went out there, we did our job, and we came back, and I think the results, and I was really impressed with the council this year and the staff, did a great job of lining up the meetings. Our federal lobbyist is very good, and can't say enough about Mike Dino and Patton Boggs, but thank you to my colleagues for being there to support me while we laid out the needs for our city, and I don't think our residents understand, we are fighting at the very, very top to try to get improvements of things that are in the hands of the federal government, so thank you for helping us, and thanks to the community for letting us go and represent them on Capitol Hill. It's been a great experience. That was my last year going to Washington to do that service, and I appreciated every year that I had the opportunity to do it, and we have benefited every year in one way or another from going and doing that lobbying. All of the council was there except for Councilwoman Elliott this year during the legislative meetings, and then Mr. Douglas and Mr. Huesman stayed an additional week to attend the National League of Cities Conference to get additional trainings, and they serve on some of the different boards that are offered through National League of Cities, so I want to thank Huesman and Douglas for attending that National League of Cities, and I'm hopeful that between the two of them, they could put together a short 10-minute update as to what went on at National League of Cities, and any information that they could share with the rest of the council would be relevant. So, thank you again to the residents for allowing them that opportunity. I know some of the council members went to the Metro North Chamber Gala, so thank you for attending that. Rotary dinner, every year the Rotary Club does a dinner, Valentine's Day dinner, and this year, a lot of gratitude from the Rotary Club for the participation by the council Let's see, Huesman, Frank, Wardiola, and Teeter all attended, and as well as Ed Davis, and as well as Lisa from the senior administrative offices, and it was a great turnout, and would gladly have you all make it an annual event, and hopefully we can get some of the other council members there as well. Today, I did have the opportunity to sit down for lunch with Chief Vensel from the Fire Department, and just working on relationships and the fact that all of the agencies in our community have to have a relationship, we have to work together, and the more we work together, the better off that we can be as a community. I know the school district's here in the audience, but it's important that we, as a council, care about education, we care about the Fire Department response times, the ISO rating of one, and we need our agencies that are, government agencies that are in our community to also have that relationship with us because we will need each other throughout the process of growing this community, and we want to be there for the Water District, for the Fire District, for the School Districts, both of them, and collaborate to be able to have better education, better water, and better fire services. So, to me, relationships are a huge piece of what we need to do in this community. I talked to Chief Vensel, they have their first ever report, financial report and update from the Fire District. They've asked to be put on the agenda to come in and do a presentation similar to hearing the Historical Society presentation or one of the others, and I think that that's important that we afford that to all the agencies that have a need on, you can't do it every week, but to do it, you know, annually or biannually when we need updates and when there's something going on, I think it'd be great if the Water District could come in and tout to the public on Channel 8 their water softening program that they broke ground on the other day. The School District, to be able to tout when you start getting the turnaround taken care of, and we have a plan of action and the state and everybody's moving forward together to improve education in our community, I want you here to give that update, and I also want to afford that to the Fire District, so I look forward to Chief Vensel coming in at an upcoming meeting to give his presentation, and with never have doing this before, I think it means even more that they want to come and present to the council to let them know this is what we're doing and collaborating on how we work moving forward. So, I want to thank Chief Vensel for the opportunity to get him in here and get that presentation to our residents. I need to thank Councilwoman Elliott. When I was away for the three or four days, she was the mayor, and she did a great job. She got some graffiti cleaned up and got some issues taken care of for some residents, and she took it seriously, and I was glad to see updates on Facebook and everything else that she was snapping the whip. I know the administrative staff was glad to see us come back, but Crystal was not going to let anybody get away with anything, and she was going to make sure she did something while I was out of town. and she was going to make sure she did something while I was out of town.
It was my last Ross. Go big or go home.
Well, thanks, Crystal. I appreciate you stepping in. Talking about the storm, there was a lot of different complexities of this particular storm versus a lot of other storms. We lost power in a huge part of our community and for a long time. We had residents who were out of power for three days. Unfortunately, one of those facilities that was out of power for at least 48 hours was Contra Estates. And Contra Estates, one of the seniors that lives there happened to call me and said, "Hey, I don't know what to do. You know, we're worried about our management company taking care of us. Nobody's communicated anything to us. It's a senior housing development. Some of us are on oxygen. Luckily, I have liquid oxygen as well as a compressor." And he said, "But if I didn't have the liquid oxygen, I would be really nervous as a senior, not knowing when my power is going to come back on and what can we do?" I did make a few phone calls. Brian reacted right away, got him in touch with the emergency response team. We ended up getting housing, the housing authority went over and took him some food, went to the store and got some hot fried chicken and mashed potatoes and gravy or whatever and went over and made sure that they had a hot meal. And they called me back and they thanked me for the efforts. They said tremendous things about the police officers that were there. So to you, Chief, they touted the officers. It was great to hear all this positive stuff that occurred from a negative event. But it also made me realize that, as Mr. Curna said earlier, we're growing. We're not going to stop for a while. And some of these particular developments, especially when they house seniors or whether they're care facilities and whatnot, I would like to respectfully request that they work out some kind of a plan and work with the city so that if there's an event, they're communicating to their residents. Their residents know what to do, what happens, you know, if the power goes out, if there's a life-threatening emergency, you need to call 911. If there's not and you're just concerned, there should be some contacts for those folks. And I want to make those contacts available also to the city so that if those folks need to get ahold of somebody because they need a bottle of oxygen or they're just scared because their power hasn't been on and they're stuck in their room. If the elevators are out, they don't have the ability to walk up and down the stairs. So I'd really like to have our emergency management team take a look at what we can do from a proactive approach to try to make it easier for some of those residents that we have in our community that are reliant upon others in a time of situation of no power, flooding, any of those kinds of occurrences. So if you would please look into that. And I want to thank Mr. McBroom and his staff for getting out there. Tracy with the housing authority for getting some food out there and really helping to calm those folks down. They were wanting to know where there's a shelter at so that they can get a bus to a shelter because they were worried and it really helped calm things down. And when the guy talked to me, I said, "Well, I'm glad someone responded." He said, "Someone," he said, "they showed up like it was D-Day." He said, "There was all kinds of people showing up to take care of us." And to me, that is what we should be about as a community. We should show up when there's a need. And thankfully, it worked out in our favor this time and a lot of that's to McBroom and his efforts to get those folks rolling and over there because even though it doesn't seem like an emergency to us, it's an emergency to them. So, thank you again to the staff. Let's see, tomorrow night is the Mayor Commissioners Youth Award hosted by Commerce City at Bison Ridge Rec Center. And as of right now, I can't be there, but we only have one person signed up. And I wanted to really ask to see if I could get more participation at that dinner tomorrow night to back up Jose. So if any of you, you don't have to answer me right now, but if any of you have any opportunity to make it there, that, I haven't missed any, but I'm going to miss this one. But that's one of those events where it pulls at your heartstrings. It's really important. I know last year, I believe Councilwoman Frank was there on our anniversary. And it would be great if we had a better showing than just one. So, think about it. If you, if any of the council can get free to make an appearance and be there to support these young kids in our community, I would appreciate that. Personally, appreciate it. So, think about that one. With that, I will end my reports and I will open it up for anybody that has anything they'd like to add. Mr. Douglas, your light's on again.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And yes, tomorrow night, it's a Park and Rec advisory meeting in the same building, so I will be attending both.
Good. Thank you.
Some of my things aren't coming up right, so I did put requests to attend. I just want to make note, I do appreciate the citizens allowing me to go to Washington DC and also attending the city congressional, city conference. Myself and Councilman Hughesman attended. We're on different subcommittees as well and mine is Transportation Infrastructure Service Committee. Besides that, I'm also in the first-tier suburb council because we are first-tier city from a metropolitan city of Denver and we do get a lot of overflow, not only transit traffic, but also people seeking to live outside of the city and we're pretty much, I'd say, a number-one option based on our growth rate. Let's see, attendance, other sessions, one is Advanced Racial Equity and Local Government. That was an all-day session on Saturday and then Sunday was an extension and then the other half of the day was my Infrastructure Transportation Committee. Besides other meetings on, opening session, general session on Monday and Tuesday, had dinner with the youth commission. Had four youth commission kids attend Washington this year and the kids had a great time. Asked a lot of great questions. Had breakfast with Senator Bennett and Senator Gardner at Veterans of Foreign Wars at the VFW Memorial Building on Wednesday and along with other Colorado delegates from across the state. That same day, there was a subcommittee on highway and transit at the Capitol. And usually, you know, people go there to visit, well, they're actually doing business there and they had a hearing which both the House and Senate side were there. Different member of Congress would come and go. That was a three-hour sit-through. And then just in the afternoon, I had the ability to attend. I was requested by National League of Cities to attend the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee with staff from the majority into minority at the Rayburn Building. And we talked about a lot on transit, especially our great separation that affects our population. But just to know that there are a lot of things that are happening in Washington, but when we go there, we're able to talk face-to-face with our delegates that oversee Colorado. They do care. They have staff that is committed to make sure all our issues are addressed and I do appreciate that. And so, I just want to make sure people are aware that when we go there, we're in a mission. It makes it hard because we also have to get up two hours early than we do here and when daylight saving comes on that Sunday, it ends up being three hours. So I'm used to working overnight anyway, but to have to get up at 3:30 in the morning, it feels like that back there even though it's 5:30. So, I want to thank the council for going out there and learning and asking questions and showing up for the meetings. We're not one of those cities that our members go and they miss meetings for some reason and full attendance and I appreciate Councilwoman Frank for, I mean Frank, sorry, Elliott, Crystal Elliott for being the city mayor. I did sense a request her way and she was right on there and I do appreciate that. I did have some calls from Contra Estates and it's great to hear how those folks are being taken care of. So even though we're away, we still hear about the issues on a daily basis and we do respond. So, again, I appreciate that my time served.
Thanks, Steve. All right, with that being said, if there be no further information or duties to come before the city council this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight. We do have some other meetings we have to get into. First is the ECA GID. I'd like to call that meeting to order and have the secretary call the role, please.
Chair Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Madera?
Present.
Board Member Frank?
Present.
Board Member Davis?
Present.
Board Member Douglas?
Present.
Board Member Hughesman?
Present.
Board Member Elliott?
Present.
Board Member Wardiola?
Present.
Chair Yevakorm?